Good afternoon, everybody. We are gathered here for a work session today. There's one item on our work session agenda and Councilmember Muntzen has asked that we add an item. So without objection, we would add, item two for the work session would be the fireworks contract for 2015. So any objection to that adding today's work session? Okay. First item on the agenda is agency contributions. There were two agencies that council wanted to get more information about. You have in the packet letters of request and other information from both CASA and the Contemporary School for the Arts and Gallery. I believe we'll start with the Contemporary School for the Arts and I think the goal here is for the council to hear from these organizations. Correct me if I'm wrong. And to ask questions and then to just ultimately decide whether or not the funding that's in the budget will move forward. So if, without further ado, we'll invite Ron Lidle up to the table here. You can come up to the table here. Yeah, we're not set up for our usual work session today, so.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank you for the last several years for your support.
Yeah, you're welcome to sit down there.
All right. I want to thank you for your support over the last 11 years. August 23rd will be our 11th year at 4 West Franklin Street. Unfortunately, we have a new headquarters. We'll be at 82 West Washington Street, the Bryan Center, Suite 611. We'll be operating our foundation out of there. Also, we are in negotiation with the Hamilton, not the Hamilton, but the Alexandria House. I understand they're under new management. We've been in contact with them, so we're trying to acquire the property at 6 South Potomac Street, which is on the square, I do believe. So as soon as they get back in touch with us, we will continue to pursue that. But what we are doing at the present time, we are actually expanding our business into the Board of Education and into the community as an after-school art program opposed to having a gallery so much. So that's where we're at today. We ask that you would continue to support us so we can continue to meet our mission. Even though we expanded to Waynesboro, we're not deserting Washington County.
Councilmembers have any questions? Anyone want to start?
Ron, my recollection is that at least in the beginning, it's not throughout this money's been used in conjunction with whatever you were doing at City Park. Is that correct?
The money that we was using was allocated to programs that we did, like an after-school art program. We did our summer program, like a summer curriculum and as well as putting on fundraisers, I'll say, like art in the park. We did a couple of events at the Bridge of Life Church, like for Mother's Day, Father's Day, that type of ordeal. So providing that the 4,000 or 5,000 is allocated, that's what we'll continue to use it for, but not so much that as it is our after-school art program. Our significance is our after-school art program. Working with the Board of Education and working with Mr. Ted Schenk, we're trying to get into the Housing Authority with it this year.
Can you describe what that program is? What children you serve? What age groups you serve? What geographical area you serve? How many kids you serve?
Yes, I can. Geographical, it's anywhere downtown is what we was trying to serve here at 11, at 4 West Franklin Street. But now that we're going to the community, we're a little bit broader. Over the past few years, our enrollment has came down simply because of what's happening on Franklin Street. That's all I can say. The ladies clothing stores, they finally left the community, so that left the retail with the Hookah Lounge and Bondsman, so we lost a lot of clients due to that.
Do you have any concept of how many children you're going to be serving with this money?
Yes. The number of approximately 300 students throughout Washington County. This is high-risk children at Frederick Manor, Nolan Village, Robert W. Johnson Community Center, things of that nature. That's where we'll be targeting now.
And what does the program do?
The children that we're dealing with is K through 12th grade, but our emphasis is from elementary to middle school.
And can you describe what a kid would do? When would they come to the program? What do they do with the program?
The program will begin again in September and at the end, at the end of May, and they will learn introductory to elementary art, which is learning how to draw, learning how to paint, learning how to keep your supplies clean, learning oil paintings, craft art, a little bit of computers. It's pretty broad, but you have eight months to learn a whole lot. So every month, they'll be learning something different.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Muntzen. How, who teaches your classes?
We have several volunteers and most of them are artists of Washington County.
And how do these kids get to your classes?
Well, they won't be getting to our classes now. We'll be going to the children now.
Oh, so you'll be going to the various?
Community centers and we're going to the Board of Education, providing our services now.
Okay. Do you have any sense how many kids you can possibly serve?
Well, I don't know what the Housing Authority is dealing with out there, but we're interested in the serious-minded artists, not so much the children that want to learn all the other aspects that the Boys and Girls Club offer at the facility. So I would think we will probably, probably around 300 children. And there's like five locations, so I can't see why we can't meet our needs.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? So the question is, you know, the objective is for city funds to be used for organizations to provide a service which should be considered to be of significant value to the objectives of the city functions and/or the organization makes a reasonable contribution to the social and cultural environment of Hagerstown and the significance of the city contribution on the organization's budget and their ability to enlist financial support from other sources and from revenue for services provided. As I looked at your, the information you provided on finances, I couldn't find where any other contributions might be coming from. Do you receive other funding besides?
CVB was, has been and still is making contributions. Since your staff has, well, since the economy has taken a toll, we've taken a cut from all different people who have been providing resources to us. CVB cut theirs in half. They was giving us 5,000, now we're down to like 2,500. Originally, you was giving us 5,000, now we're down to 4,000, so. And we're out there working harder to obtain more money. I think in our outline there, I think our budget was like $17,000, so your 4,000 and that 2,000, it shows that we are getting more support from other entities, you know, like Lee Downey, Rotary Club, and various other organizations. They make small contributions like $500 here, $250 there, but without your significant help, we probably wouldn't make it.
Ron, I'd like to have a list of the other artisan that are going to help. You know, I only know of you as far as doing anything, so I just would like to know who the other artists are.
It's on the website. It's on the website.
Surely you're joking.
You're talking to the wrong person when you say that, Ron. You're talking to the wrong person, Ron. We won't even go there, okay? Don't need the website when you come with this. That's what I need, okay? I'd like to know, all right? But if you're looking at the Girls and Boys Club, then that's primarily through Hagerstown Housing Authority then with that group, okay? And then, other than that, are we looking at who? Memorial Rec still?
No, that is not Memorial Rec. It's Robert W. Johnson and it's also Dr. Wilcox.
Now, I know, but you know what? I still go back to what the original was, so you'll have to excuse me for that. But that's what I need to know, you know?
Say it again.
How many other, I needed to know what other than Housing Authority that you also are going to be involved with?
Robert W. Johnson and Washington County Board of Education.
When has that been confirmed with the Board of Ed? Has that already been confirmed?
We're having a meeting with Dr. Wilcox. Mr. Al Martin serves on our board and him and I are scheduled to meet with Mr. Wilcox.
Okay. When's that supposed to be, you know?
As soon as Al gets a free moment.
Yeah, well, good luck. Al's pretty busy.
Any other questions? Thoughts? Well, I guess I need a sense of whether or not the council wants to keep this in the budget or not include it in the budget. It is D-Day, if you will, in terms of making this decision.
Mayor, let me just ask one further question.
Sure.
Because of your change in circumstances, speaking for myself and maybe some others, I have some concerns about the continuation of your services. So I'm going to ask you this. If you were to get this money to continue what you've been doing, would you be willing to come back here in January and sit down and explain to this council how this money is being used at that time?
I can give you receipts for the whole allocated money if you wish.
You can do what?
Provide you receipts for where the money is spent. If you want in January, if we decide to spend it all between now and January, we won't get it until August if you provide it. But I don't see us spending it all in four or five months, but if need to be, then.
I thought I heard you say the program would begin in September.
September until May.
January would give you some, would give some sense of what's happening with your program at that point.
Mm-hmm.
So you'd be willing to come in here, sit down, and provide us with receipts and with your commentary on where things are happening, how many kids there are in each program?
Sure.
And who's teaching what program and so on?
Yes.
Okay. And can you set that date up if we accept this? Can you set that date up with our city clerk before you leave today?
I don't know how I can do that.
She's right there. She's right there. I don't know how I can set a date up.
I'll make sure it happens, Mr. Muntzen. If that's what the council desires, I will make sure it happens.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
My only thought is that I appreciate everything Ron said. It's already in the budget. I think the bigger question is, do we write a check right away? The only thing I would like to see is to make sure, Ron, before the check gets cut to you, that you have these things in place. But, you know, would hate to cut the check right now and find out that things didn't work with Robert Johnson Center, things didn't work with the Board of Education, and we weren't servicing the children in the city because we weren't able to make it work. In the same respect, I don't want to look at you and say, well, I'm going to withhold the funding, therefore almost guaranteeing that it can't work, okay? So I want it to work. So I want you to know from my perspective, this is just me, you've heard from Councilmember Muntzen, if I were told that you have these things set up and that these services actually are going to happen, then I would say, yeah, and I would agree with Don. But I already know that you have no problem indicating where the money is actually spent, and I know you will do that. I'm much more concerned with making sure that we actually have the program really running, that we have the contacts made and the expectations, okay?
Thoughts from this side of the room?
Well, I can go along, I didn't call for this session, but I can go along with the suggestions of both. I don't think they're mutually exclusive, and I think they're both reasonable, and we could ask staff to ascertain whether those programs are in place, you know, where they've been established. I'm not sure, I'm going to put a shot over the bow here, I'm not sure to what extent we can keep funding these in future years. As you know, we have a very, very difficult budget situation, but we've been through the budget cycle, so I can't see cutting at this point.
And to extend on that.
So I can go along with both those suggestions.
And this is again a discussion that's beyond just the Contemporary School for the Arts or even CASA. We, I'll be working with staff over the summer to come up with a better process for how these agency contributions are placed in the budget, because at this point, it's one of those things where you get on, you know, a line in the budget and it stays there until something changes or, you know, or, you know, we get other requests that make us take a look at what's going on with our agency funding, which is, I think, where we're at. I mean, I know that there's other agencies that I get requests from probably on a weekly basis that are very worthwhile, and I think to have a more objective, transparent process for agencies to be able to apply for funding and then have the accountability mechanisms in place, I think, is the way to go. I do think it's for any organization who's about to end one fiscal year and enter another, I think it's difficult to say, okay, you know, even though you've been in our budget for the last six months, here at the very end, we're going to cut you. And I don't know if that's the desire of the majority of the council here. I haven't heard from a majority yet that says that, oh, well, I have heard from a majority that we want to keep it in. If anyone else has any other.
Under the condition.
Under the, under the conditions explained. So I guess with that feedback, we'll be in touch on a meeting in January and also, I guess, some steps in the intervening time just to check in and see how things are going with the operations.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Well, I think Lou suggested we don't cut the check until things are in place.
Correct.
I agree with that.
Right.
You know, until he's established a program that begins in September.
Right.
And in that case, and then still reporting back.
In January.
How it's going and how the expenditures are going.
Well, and I would, I would think that we may likely hear from him before January since the, I would imagine the budget request would be, the process will be rolled out in September to allow agencies to apply by January 1st, so I would think we would probably want an update before January 1st as to how things are.
I ain't wrong to stay in touch with staff. It's not a huge city and difficult for people to communicate with each other. I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Just in terms of the process, that's how I see the timeline working out.
Right. And I think I know where to find him now that he's changing his location.
All right.
I see him all over the place. Just give me a list of those artists. I'm not going on the computer.
All right, so.
Just put it on the web.
I'll add that as a specific request from Councilmember Nye. A list of artists. All right. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Good day.
Next, I will invite Vicki from CASA, and I'm sorry, I don't want to mispronounce your name, so please remind me how to pronounce it.
Um, Vicki is welcome.
Vicki, please come up. I know you have a member of your board here with you.
Yes, this is Jack Hall.
Jack, thanks for joining us.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I certainly want to voice again our appreciation for the support from the city of Hagerstown. It has been essential in providing services to victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. We continue to deal with the problem in the community. We partner on a regular basis with the Hagerstown Police Department, and Chief Holzman is here tonight. If you have any questions for him concerning our partnership. This is Jack Hall. He is a board member, and he is also chair of our Facilities Committee, which has been a full-time job for him over the past year. So we're here to answer any questions you have about our program or anything we can do this evening.
I'll open it up to the council members for questions. I have some questions. So first is a two-part question, and it was at least some of council's impression that some of the CASA operations have not been in operation over the course of the past year for some time. Is that true or not true?
I don't think it's been a secret, we were in the newspaper, that we had a severe bid-bug problem in the shelter, which many of the shelters across Maryland have had to deal with. We brought in a company to deal with the issue, and while we were almost ready to open after that happened, we encountered a problem with mold, and it was even found during a state inspection. So we dealt with that issue, then we had a problem with flooding. Anything we haven't had to deal with is fam and the shelter right now.
Pestilence, we haven't had pestilence this year.
And you're on, and just to remind folks, you're on the sort of the five corners, right?
Well, it's a confidential location for safety concerns, because we have to deal with that. But the whole time the shelter was closed due to those issues, my staff were operating in the shelter. During that time, we provided comprehensive services to 110 women involving 116 children. If you say, well, how did you provide services to people if the shelter was closed? The 24-hour hotline operates out of the shelter, so we still get the calls. People are calling for help, so my staff worked with them to find safe shelter. Many of the shelters across the state and our neighboring states, Martinsburg, Gettysburg, Chambersburg, Frederic County, all worked with us and helped us shelter our clients there. They were provided every other service that our agency provides, legal assistance, help in getting a protection order, help in finding housing, and the counseling services. So they did receive services, the comprehensive services that were required. We did not just sit.
Do, do you service those individuals that either call in or come in for direct service? I'm assuming those are individuals throughout the county, at least the county.
Right. But when we look at our figures and the number that we serve approximately, and this has held level over several years now, that approximately 62% of our people are city residents.
Have a Hagerstown address or are within the municipal boundaries of the city.
Right, right.
Have a Hagerstown address.
Hagerstown address, city, city boundaries.
Of, of the nearly, what, 40% of folks that do not have a Hagerstown address, I'm assuming they are from other parts of the county.
Right.
But within the total, it looks like almost a million-dollar budget, the city is the only municipality that provides some share of the cost in addition to the contribution of cost from the county as a whole.
Right.
There's no contribution from Boonsborough or other municipalities throughout the county?
No, there's not.
Is the city of Hagerstown the only location in which you provide both administrative and sheltering services?
Yes. We did have an office in the Hancock area, but funding was cut in that area. We still do a lot of outreach to the county. County government funds CASA in the amount of $306,900. So they do provide a lot of services. The building we're setting in is a county building. They provide everything except mowing for us at the facility. So we are strongly supported by the county in that respect. But the services at the shelter are 24 hours a day, seven days a week, fully staffed by professional staff. The services at the shelter or at the office facility are five days a week, 8:30 to 4:30 except for Tuesday and Wednesday, and we're open till 8 o'clock on Tuesday night and Wednesday night, 7:30, so we can provide services to the victims that do work during the day. At that address, also, we provide abuser intervention services. This is counseling services to abusers. I would say 99% of the abusers are court-ordered, so we work closely with the judges in monitoring the abuse that goes on with these offenders. So, you know, we really try to work with everyone that plays an important role in domestic violence.
How many staff do you have total?
We have 19.
And that's full and part-time staff?
That's, we have one part-time, so it's 18 full-time now and one part-time. We just lost a staff member. The Maryland Victims of Crime Grant got cut to funding for one time for three years, and we were seven years into the grant, which a lot of programs across the state got caught in that. So we did lose that funding and had to cut that position.
Mr. Muntzen.
How many clients do you serve in a year?
At the shelter facility? Last year, we had about 337, and.
And 62%, roughly 62% of them were from the city of Hagerstown.
Were city residents, right, right. And that may not sound like a big number to you, but you have to keep in mind that we have people, some people come in and just spend a night, but you do have people that reach the point that they want to make a real change in their situation. When I first started this job many moons ago, you could get a person into stable housing in 30 days. Now you are really lucky if you can do it in 90. So we've had to expand our shelter time to 90 days, and during that 90 days, our shelter staff works with those people on a daily basis and partners with all the housing complex, city and county housing. And when you face people that are on city and county housing that has a waiting list of years, not months.
Is that what you account the length of trying to find placements?
Because we do work with them till they find some type of stable housing, because if you just kind of keep them, you get them an income, okay? But if you don't work with them till the end, they're going to go back, because you think of what it's like for somebody that's trained in the job.
Path of least resistance, sure.
Everything, right. And so it's really hard for them, and so, you know, if she has three kids and she's not making it at all, we're setting her up for failure.
Would you, would you describe the services that you provide to the city of Hagerstown Police Department and tell us if, if your services provide opportunities that would not be available for the people of Hagerstown?
Could I let Chief Holzman speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely, if he's willing to do that, absolutely.
Please.
I think that's important.
Sure. Just to answer the question, we do use the services of CASA on a regular basis. We have a detective assigned to do domestic violence cases along with child abuse cases. Detective Flegel, I spoke with him. He says.
Please, a mic a little closer, please.
Detective Flegel said they are still using them on a regular basis, and what happens on the police department's side of things, domestic violence is one of those areas you just can't give up any ground on. The department's gained a lot of good ground over the years in progressively and aggressively pursuing those cases. So providing shelter location is very important. Our detective goes out with the staff from CASA almost on a daily basis and does the after-action visits at the houses. So when the police officer's there in the evening during the crisis, they're going out the next day with our detective, the next day, meeting with them, trying to encourage them to use all the services that are available, and that's where some of those 300 placements into CASA shelter are being activated from.
Chief, if CASA were to go away in the next five minutes, how would that affect your department?
Tremendously. We don't have many places at all that would take, the Salvation Army will take females, but beyond that, we'd be reaching out to faith-based community and looking for some services. There basically, there's a big gap. Without this group, there's a big gap in place.
So it would cost the citizens of Hagerstown a lot more money probably in terms of manpower trying to work these issues out if CASA weren't there?
Absolutely, and of course, that's just one issue. The other would be the danger to the women, that they would not have a safe place to go, so they're just. is an alternative out there that we, that we know of to use, uh, at the level that CASA can provide for us.
Okay, thank you.
Have you found in that process, over the course of time, that because the only facility offered by this entity happens to be within the urban core of our city, and 40% of the folks that utilize this service, uh, then are mobilized, uh, you know, for services then into that core, uh, which brings, uh, the, uh, process of the issue then into our urban core, that that has an impact on, uh, your police services?
I would say that, you know, we do not have a call load at the facility itself. Uh, that, that's, uh, that's been going very well. In other words, the shelter itself, uh, the location for police service has been, has been very, very light over the years. Speaking to the broader issue of, of bringing in all the county's problems into the city so the city police can deal with them, uh, that's, is it contributing to the overall call-load force, perhaps? Uh, but, I couldn't speak to any specific examples. Uh, in other words, if, if, uh, an ex-spouse were to, were to try to meet, meet their, their, their wife or girlfriend here in Hagerstown, and that could cause a dispute, that, that's when the police would get involved. Um, as far as placement from the shelter, placement back out into, into temporary or permanent housing, I can't speak to where, where the, the ladies go from, from the shelter into the community, where they're being placed, whether it's in city housing or county housing. Uh, I don't know about that.
Mr. Metzner?
One, can you let us know how you have identified what percentage of your clients are city residents?
Thanks, Chief.
Um, when we meet with our clients, we do intakes, whether it's at the shelter facility or office facility. Part of that intake is to find out where they live because we have to supply demographic, demographic information to our state funders.
Okay.
So, we kind of track that because we know when we're applying to the city, the county, when we're talking about statistics to the state government, federal government, they want those type, type of demographics. So, we do that.
Do you make that determination by street address?
Yes.
Or by City of Hagerstown mailing? If somebody says, "I'm a, where do you live? I live at 300 East Urban Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland." Does that mean they're a Hagerstown resident? Or is there some method to go through that actual, uh, street address and find out whether that isn't-
We go by the street address. Um, and can I follow up on a, a question that, um, was asked about the problems at the shelter? We ju, just don't let the, the residents kind of do what they may. The shelters ran with strict guidelines because we realize the populations that we're dealing with. If she feels safe enough to go out and meet the, the abuser and go all over town with him, then she doesn't need our services. Maybe she really needs to think about what it is she wants to do. And, obviously, it's not to make a change at that time. We're not going to endanger the rest of the residents for her. So, we're very strict about the guidelines we have. Um, they just don't sit around all day. We really, you know, run the house in a manner that's positive, not only for the women, but we have to think of those children as well. So, we really monitor what goes on as much as we can.
And we have to provide a safe structure for them to be in. Part of the problem we had, the bedbugs and all the other contributing problems we had in an old building, was the fact that we took that opportunity while we were repairing those to go through the whole building, do other things. We tore out all the carpet because you deal with more people with asthma now, things like that, especially in the children. So, we put tile floors through everything. We, uh, had volunteer groups come in and paint the whole building. The last time it was, well, the time it was painted, when it was given to us as the shelter, the con, I talked to the contractor who was painting, back then, he charged 60 grand to paint the building. We have a lot less than that in it because of the volunteer people come. And, we have an alarm system, a monitoring system, so we can see anybody who's hanging outside the building who may give something. Uh, so, you know, all the people in the neighborhood know. So, they, you, you know, they know that the police is going to show up. So, they don't want a problem with the police.
Citizens to aid the sheltered, abused, we use words throughout. When I read information from CASA, when I read your letters, we use, um, nice words such as abusers and victims. But, my understanding is twofold. One, I'm much more interested in talking about other services than the shelter. Other people have shelter interest. I have totally different interests. Your agency, first of all, as I understand it from my experience, so we're clear, represents women.
No. Predominantly, you are correct that it does protect or provide services to women. Any man that walks in that door is provided the same services. I would think right now, now this is off the top of my head, that we have 10 men in services and victim services. Abuser is much higher. But, we use those terms as they relate to the problems presenting themselves, whether it's man or woman.
Well, I guess my concern is from my personal experience. And, and I'm talking about, and I don't know what your expenses are as they relate to it, but the services that CASA directly provides to court. I, I found it extremely interesting, and I just have to say it. When I was representing a victim, a male victim, in a domestic violence case in which the female was criminally charged by police and was in court on a domestic violence issue, the people that were with her were CASA people.
Right. And, I'm saying that may happen.
And I didn't understand if who you are representing are the abused, why CASA would be in court assisting the abuser?
We all know. And, I'm, I'm just, that there can be a case, male, female, will say to you, "I've been abused. She, she beats me up." And, and we do assessments. This is where our assessment, because we've had women that were court-ordered to us as an abuser. She comes in to the abuser intervention program through an assessment by two professionals in the abuser program, and then an assessment by a victim therapist, that she truly is the victim. This is the time that she got caught fighting back. She said, "I am tired of it. I'm not going to be knocked around like this." And, I'm, I'm just saying, this could be a guy too, because we have had guys-
Love to find out. I would love CASA to give me, and I'm more than willing before I make any decisions, to give me any statistics that you have of CASA ever being in court representing a male, ever, for any reason.
I can check it out.
Please do. I, I would like to know. I don't want to make conclusions. I, I have seen what I've seen. So, I would like to see if you have statistics that indicate.
But, I really need to say, I think that's unfair to base our allocation on that statement. Because, we may not have-
I, I did not say I would base that allocation on that statement.
We may not have gone to court with the victim. We had a guy that was a Marine. And, he was up at, I can't think, not Richie, um, David, Camp David. And, he was referred to us by the, um, services. That, I mean, she did a number on him. His, in here, in his rib cage and all, she had used a pan on him. And, his reasons were that first, he was taught by his mother, "You never hit a girl." Secondly, he knew that if he fought back and lost his temper, he could kill her. So, that's one we've dealt with. You know, another one came to us-
And, can I ask one more question, then I'll be done? Just so we all know, because where I'm coming from, it, it's CASA correctly supplies legal counsel to domestic violence victims free of charge.
Right. Male or female?
Male or female, and appears in court to be there for anybody who makes the request, right?
Right.
So, they don't have to come to CASA first. There's an attorney there. And, I would love to know, again, out of the years that you've been providing that legal representation, how many men have been represented? And, and I won't, I'm not basing whether I would vote for funding or not on that issue. I have other issues. Councilman Alshire brought up some that I've had, not with CASA, but with, and I had a big beef about a $5,000 issue where no other municipality in the county is even being requested for five cents. And, that's, that's an issue that I have and some others have, which is not germane to CASA alone, okay? But, I would be interested in the other.
Right. But, I would, I would just like to say that, you know, most of the time, the male will handle the finances. And, he has more of an ability to pay an attorney. And, I'm just saying that to start, but I will look at the numbers because we offer the services the same to whomever comes in that front door.
I just have a few questions.
Lou, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, no, I'm done. No, no, I'm done.
Um, you mentioned Martinsburg, Chambersburg, Gettysburg, among other places where your clients went.
Right.
Do you know if those municipalities, they're all municipalities or boroughs, they're boroughs in Pennsylvania, do you know if they contribute to their-
I have no idea. We don't, don't ask that kind of question. There is, uh-
You're asking?
Yeah, no. I'm saying we've never asked that question about their funding. There's an agreement, an unofficial agreement between the shelters-
I understand that.
-that we will certainly help when we can.
Well, I'd, I'd be interested in, in, in finding out. Because, you know, municipalities are the bottom of the totem pole in Maryland, you know, we're the last, we have the least amount of resources. Um, there is a loan for $206,000 from the city, is, and $150,000 from the state. They're virtually in perpetuity. They expire, I think, in the 2030s. Uh, is that, i, is there a discernible asset from that? Is that, I, I thought I heard you say that the county provided your, your, uh, facility? Did you, and, and I'm wondering where the 205,000 is.
That's a, a community development block grant.
Right, block grant.
I think that was one of the last ones that went through that doesn't have to be paid back, as long as we use the facility as a shelter. The 150,000 is a home grant, um, that we have in providing services in our transitional apartments.
But, what was the purpose of the 206? Is it a recoverable asset, or is it a-
We, that was the money, we, we had another shelter before where we're at now.
I understand that.
And, to get this building, we had to have additional funding. So, as long as we use it as a shelter facility, providing services to victims of domestic violence, um, and it used to be homeless people. But, um, as long as that is the use for the facility, it never has to be paid back.
And, you say the reason you, you, your, uh, client, clients are, uh, in longer, it's more difficult to find housing? Is that because you basically look to public and Section 8 housing and it's harder to arrange?
Right.
Because I know the private market-
Some do go and-
-depressed and housing's more available, as I understand it, in the private market.
Well, not many, many of our women have the resources to go out and pay eight, nine, $1,200 rent. Um, they're trying to survive. We do have some professional people, and they move right on and, and find their rents. Um, but, that is not usually the, the predominant people we see. Our people are starting their lives over. And, some go to school. Uh, we're able to provide schooling for them, training, um-
But, I, I guess, I'm sorry to interrupt, but, because we're going on a long time. The housing market has declined. It's depressed. The prices are lower right now. And, and so, I'm saying, if, if it was difficult in the housing boom, if it was 60 days, in a depressed market, it's 90 days. That's what I don't understand.
But, I'm saying, it was 30 days to get someone into, that would go into subsidized housing or housing county-city. That's what I said.
Yeah.
And, now, trying to do that is 90 days.
It's the subsidized housing. It's not defined. That's, that's right.
Because of the requirements that they put in place for the various funding that, that is allocated to put people in housing.
Okay. Thank you.
I just, I have a question. And, you may not be able to answer it. But, um, women or men that come into your shelter, do you know how long a time they have actually spent in the city of Hagerstown? Now, I'm, I mean, Hagerstown residents, okay, that we have this. And, I'm sure that you probably don't ask. But, that seems to be where we're being inundated with a lot of the organizations, those that are coming in here because we have so much to offer. And, it just would be nice to kind of track that.
We could start tracking that for you, if that's something-
You know, I mean, you know, because it just stands to reason, because, you know, when you have facilities, some, you know, facilities may be full, and then it's a matter of, well, gee. And, honestly, it would not be just yours. There are other ones as well-
Oh, I understand that.
-that this is the place to come, okay?
Oh, it is. Because, I can tell you, on our hotline, we'll get calls from Baltimore City, Baltimore County, um, and we'll say, "Don't come up here."
Mm-hmm.
You know, first of all, you have to be here 30 days to, to receive services. But, we can tell you, housing is no better up here than it is down there.
But, it's, but, it's easier to get into housing up here if you're carrying a voucher from down there.
Well-
That's why everybody is at a standstill who lives here.
Yeah, we don't even, right. And, but, we don't even ask that. We tell them not to come.
Yeah. But, I'm just saying, that is the problem with what you have in waiting the 90 days. But, it would be interesting to, you know, interesting to see as to how many. Because, see, you're requiring only 30 days. And, there's another organization that is saying, "Okay, you know what? In order for us to help a prisoner, okay, you have to live in this city for 60 days." So, you see, that's, you know, tracking that may-
We can start that July 1, if that's something you're interested in seeing.
I'm just saying, I, I'm, I'm just really so tired of the ones that are coming in outside of the community as looking at this community to be the give-all, okay?
No, and it's very hard. I mean, just trying to take care of-
Right. We have citizens that are, that are struggling. And, I'm not saying being a victim, okay, is not important. But, you know, when I have other people that are out there that is also in need, yeah, it is. But, I'm just throwing it out.
So, I've, I've heard a lot of questions, and I know that there's some, and some follow-up that, that you will be providing to council members. But, I don't hear anyone suggesting that we pulled this from the approved budget, is that-
Mayor, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I would oppose defunding them. I do not support defunding them. It's, I mean, that's aside.
Thank you for making that clear.
That's aside. I'm one. And, and let me, let me just say a, a word or two, if I might. Um, in the first place, after hearing the testimony, I'm convinced that if we defund under, what, $27,000, it's going to end up costing us more as a city government and a police service to pick it up. But, there's something else. Um, we have sitting in front of us two people who have devoted themselves to this community and to difficult work in this community. And, they've come here to plea for this money. And, I think it would be the wrong message not to give them the money. Now, I, I just want to say this because it's a matter of history, and it's, uh, important to know. In 1974- In 1974, just a few days ago, I was knocking on doors, the first time running for, for the legislature, and I was on Summit Avenue, and I came across this woman, whose name, she told me, was Vicky Santavani. And my reaction, Mayor, was like yours, huh? But she got through to me, and we had a talk, we had a long talk at the door. I remember very well, Vicky, and you told me that you were going to start this shelter, that you were going to start this shelter called CASA. You've devoted your life to this, and this can't have been a whole lot of fun throughout life, the kinds of problems that you're facing. Jack Hall over here is a retired police officer, if I remember correctly. Am I right, Jack?
That is correct.
How many years with the city?
Thirty.
Thirty years with the city. And then after that, he has devoted himself to the community. And not only, not only personally, but his family as well. And, and I, I just think it's a wrong message to send anybody, the kind of effort, the kind of things that these people have done to make this a better community, to talks, to talk about defunding them. And I certainly do not support, in any sense whatsoever, defunding CASA.
Thanks. Mr. Alshire?
Yeah.
In Washington County, I believe there are a little over 600 nonprofits now. I would imagine a good number of them are in the city limits, or at least headquartered in the city limits. And like so many, from time to time, any number come before the city to request funding. And while we may discuss whether we're funding or defunding your agency or any other nonprofit that provides services, that really isn't the case. The case is, I believe, you operate on a little over a million dollar budget, of which the city makes up a small portion. What I have heard is similar to what I have seen with, I think there's 18, and I had indicated probably half of that to decrease the city's funding toward, whereby they are largely a county or regional operations provider that happen to be headquartered within the corporate limits of our city, and most notably in our urban core. And I think that is, I think that's accentuated by the fact that you state that not only are your headquarters, but also the shelter and some transitional housing. And the reality is, while, at the end of the day, if you probably did the addresses, more than half of your most recent client population base was from the city, if you took the 300 and some thousand that comes from the county, about a third of that comes from city residents. It does. And if you account for the fact that each of those properties that are not taxed, and the services associated with those properties are administered by the city, the reality is the average city resident is already paying its fair share. And it doesn't matter whether it's to CASA, or Contemporary School for the Arts, or, or, you know, most of, of, of the agencies that we fund. That's the reality. And I don't think it's a question of whether the citizens of Hagerstown pay a fair share to support such activities, because we believe they're important, but rather that we pay a greater share and absorb the, the property removed from our tax rolls and the services associated that we have to provide on that necessary local governmental service level. And, and so that's, that's the concern that I have when I express opposition within our budget.
I, I certainly understand what you're saying. And I am not in any way saying that other services aren't important, the arts project and all, but we're talking about people's lives here. I'm not trying to be dramatic. We are actually talking about people dying.
I agree.
And you've seen that within the city, within the county. CASA was started because of Mrs. Canode, and she was a city resident, and she was murdered by her husband.
With all due respect, Joe, I think that Councilman Alshire is saying.
I understand that.
City residents are paying. I mean, and.
Are you done, Kristen?
I'm done.
If I could say, first of all, so I get this clear right from the beginning. I think from a process point of view, we, as a government, are learning. It has been a huge struggle, as Marty and Kristen and Penny, who have been here before, know, we have a hundred million dollar budget, and every time we have discussions about agency contributions, it turns out that the most difficult discussions that we have are about very small portions of our budget. Clearly, the amount of money we're talking about as contributions to CASA, more importantly, $5,000 before us, that we spent the amount of time on, is a very insignificant portion of the budget. Because it is, it's almost every year as a, as a city government, when we get to these issues, after going through trying to cut and trying to do, and then we get to these agency contributions, and we go, okay, and then we go, you know what? It's not that much money worth fighting about, and nobody fights about it. And every year, we discuss it. Every year, we say we have to have a better process. So this year, the process turns out to be better, but not good enough, okay? And I say that to my fellow council members, whether we rightfully believe that we should continue in funding CASA at the current level, at a smaller level, or no level. My opinion is, this is a policy decision that we need to make long before we pass our budget.
Right.
Therefore, before I have any further comments, I want you to know that I support this fiscal year cutting the check on the budget that we've approved. That doesn't mean I don't have some real issues. I'm interested in the questions I ask you. I have professional interest, it's the kind of thing where, geez, I finally get to ask some questions I've really never had the opportunity to ask. Those questions should not be taken, however, is what you anticipated, that that would be an unfair reason for us to pull funding for CASA, and that's why I wanted to assure you, that would not be a reason that I would pull funding from CASA. It's just, sometimes you get in the unique position I'm in today, that I get to ask the question.
Right.
Okay? But I have the problems that Kristen has. And so what I would say is this, and I said this before, and when I said I was going to vote against the other funding thing, that $5,000 contribution, whatever, for a reason, I'm not going to vote against that either. But I will say this, so it's clearly understood. If any funding agency next year, and first of all, I think we should try to do this more like October, okay? Get it, get these kinds of hard things done in October, so that way, the people that are receiving funding well in advance of their fiscal year will know also. That's why I just think it would be totally unfair to be taking the funding away at this time. With the prior one, I think he has something to establish to us of what he's really going to do. I know what you all are doing, and I know the money will be used for it. But I would say this to you, if, if CASA comes back next year, or any other program that offers services to the county in general, and the city of Hagerstown is the only municipality that they have even requested funding from, I will vote no. I didn't say getting funding, but if Boonsburg isn't going to get a request, and Smithsburg isn't going to get a request, and Clearspring isn't going to get a request, and Hancock isn't going to get a request, and I would tell you, I would expect funding from them at a level commensurate with their type of budget and their type of, of population. And it may be much more of a token than anything else, and you may find that, I find, even a token acceptable. But I totally agree with Kristen, that as much as some people don't like to recognize it, and this has nothing to do with you all, because you do, but that tax money that the county commissioners have given you are coming from county taxpayers, and all of the Hagerstown city people are county taxpayers. And so instead of the Hagerstown city residents, who are without question, demographically, the poorest residents in this county, instead of them paying a fair share of CASA in relation to the rest of the community, they are paying a grossly unfair share, because they are paying double while others are not being asked to do so. So again, you have my support, you have my support for what you do. As I say, don't take some of my comments, if, if I agreed with everything that every agency did, especially with the kind of work that CASA did, on every occasion, things would be strange. If lawyers agreed with every judge's decision, things would be really weird. So I, I don't want you to take my comments as criticism. They may be open for some more dialogue that you and I can have, but not related to whether I would fund CASA.
And, and I appreciate that. I want everybody to understand that if, if you have questions about CASA, please, I would welcome the chance to sit down. When I was here last time, I, I invited you all to come see the shelter, to come tour the shelter, come see what your dollars have provided for women and children. And we do provide shelter for men in a different place. But, you know, I want you to feel comfortable with what the tax dollars are doing, because we do take that very responsible, responsibly, in that we are spending tax dollars to provide these services. We do not take that lightly.
Vicky, perhaps you can, perhaps one of your board members would be willing to volunteer to go to the other municipalities to ask them to contribute to your budget.
We certainly will.
I have to say, the same as I said to the other group, we may not be able to afford it in any event next year. I mean, in order to avoid another 11 cent tax increase, which the city administration has said may be facing us, we're going to have to cut all over the budget. I, I did an analysis, and I said, from this category, we might need $50,000 to $100,000, combined with many, many larger cuts, just to get there. Everything Kristen said is accurate, I agree with it. So no matter how much we might agree with what you're doing, and whether or not you get money from other municipalities, we may find it difficult. Now, I'm going to also say the same thing. We did look at this, as I recall, last, last fall, I believe, and we, and we certainly looked at it during the budget process this spring, and did not come up with consistent criteria. But that's not to say, as we face next year's budget, but I, I, see, I don't want to take, pick out one, one or two single agencies. I think we need to find a criteria of where we can go if we need to find savings here, and not focus on just a few. So, so we may be willing to do that, no matter how much we agree with what you're doing, we may do that, because we face extremely difficult things. We barely got through this year, and as you know, we raised taxes extensively. Can't do it again, we can't do it again.
But I certainly understand that, it's not.
So I'm just giving you a heads up as to where we might be going, as I think the other council members have done. But I'm against do it, doing it, when we've talked about this twice, I'm against doing it after the fact. So that would be my.
So it sounds like your funding is secure for FY coming up, fiscal year coming up.
Well, we certainly appreciate it, and I do understand.
That's a heads up.
Well, right, and.
For everybody, not just you all.
I'm a taxpayer too. We all are. We understand, I understand Mr. Alshire's point. I get furious sometimes when they start talking about making new fees, because for county, it'll affect municipalities. But we're in the violence, I was in the violence business. You deal with violence, it happens now. You can't have a meeting about violence. And the police department chief will tell you that policeman shows up, somebody's injured, somebody has to go to the hospital. All this time involved doing the reports, going to court, talk to that, costs you money. Removing part of that opportunity for you not to have to spend that money, because the shelter was there. The officer can take them, put them in that place for tonight, and I understand, it's here, it's going to happen. If it come from Timbuktu, we're still going to have to provide them services. And I think in the long haul, it's, it could be a lot worse. And the chief alluded to that, the cost. And everything now is a costing center, everything, it's about budget items, everything about how you're going to spend on this, how much you're going to do in gasoline, public housing. We allocate through the board and through Vicky on how we're going to spend our money, and then the federal government will change the rules, or the state will change the rules. And it just drives us crazy too, and we're still taxpayers.
We understand, but we did raise taxes 11 cents.
I understand, you understand.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add one caveat, I do.
Quickly.
Yes, sir. I do agree with Mr. Metzner that we should look at that. But I'm going to suggest, Lou, January, because I'm looking, that's when we get the responses back. It's before the staff comes forward with their recommended budget, which is three months later, two and a half, and I'm going to suggest that we do take it up early, that would be my suggestion.
Rest assured, I'll be working with staff on the.
But kind of in the middle before.
Process that will be more objective.
And by the way, maybe some of those other cuts that are very difficult.
And Mr. Mayor, can I request we move on rather rapidly?
Yes, there are two, two, two other things, actually. One, one is the fireworks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, and I do, anyone that wants to come.
Do you have a question?
Thank you. You want to talk about fireworks?
If you want to come visit the shelter, just call, I would welcome it.
Appreciate the offer for coming in. So the, Mr. Metzner, please.
Fireworks, folks. Kristen, I'm sorry, you're the only one I didn't get to talk to. Fireworks is fine for this year. The issue we have is, unfortunately, we have not had the discussions we need to for July 4, 2015. It is my understanding that if we go to a competitive bidding for July 2015, we have a true potential of not being able to secure fireworks on the day of July 4. So therefore, I'm asking the council to authorize staff, along with Mr. Bodnar, to open negotiations to see if staff can bring back a potential contract for July 4, 2015, at a rate that we could look at and say would be approvable. And then if we wanted to put it out for competitive bidding, then we, if we wanted to, we could do further investigations and/or put it out for competitive bidding for July 2016, if we felt that was appropriate. No one's asking for authority for staff to enter into any agreements, only to enter into some negotiations, bring back the results to us as soon as possible, so we could secure July 4 of next year.
Is that a motion?
That, well, it's, it's a work session, so what we need is a nod of the head.
Okay. So is everyone okay with authorizing staff to explore fireworks for 2015?
Back on July 8.
Right.
Okay. The other one is, Mr. Brubaker, I'll give him a lot of credit, has worked his magic with folks at the state. The DBED has granted the request of the city to use the remaining $13,500 or so dollars for, as part of the $100,000 that was approved from the grant. for, as part of the $100,000 that was approved from the grant to Urban Partners. Staff has worked up a change order, if you will, to the contract that would allow us to continue to use Urban Partners to keep this plan going. And along the same lines, I'd like to have a consensus that we would authorize staff to go ahead and execute that change order.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, we're adjourned.
Until seven.
At least until seven. Good evening, everybody. We're going to call this meeting to order. I would like to take this opportunity to thank a few guests for being here with us tonight. We have Boy Scout Troop 66 that meets at the First Christian Church. Do you guys want to stand up and be recognized by the council? Thank you all very much for being here. And if you would, please stand for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. We meet to serve. We meet to serve our community, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and to the future and the rights and needs of both individuals and the community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Announcements as printed on the agenda. We are operating under the rules procedure adopted September 24, 2013. Use of cell phones during meetings is restricted. All correspondence for distribution to elected officials should be provided to the city clerk and should include a copy for the city clerk for inclusion in the official record. Our meeting schedule for the next month is as follows. Next week, Tuesday, July 1, we will have no meeting. On Tuesday, July 8, we'll have a work session at 4:00 PM. Tuesday, July 15, a work session at 4:00 PM. I would add that on Thursday, July 17, we have a 4 o'clock work session scheduled as an update on the next steps for our Urban Partners report. Followed by then, what we are planning on is a public meeting at the library, which we still have the details to work out, that also will be on Thursday, July 17 at 7:00 PM. On Tuesday, July 22, we will have a regular session at 7:00 PM, and there will be no meeting on July 29 or August 8. So there'll be a two-week break, I'm sorry, August 5. July 29 and August 5, there will be no meetings. So that wraps up our meeting schedule. We do have some appointments to the Community Garden Task Force. The names of the folks being appointed are listed on the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move the appointment of the following to the Community Gardens Task Force. Terry Belasco, Terry Donaway, Julie Grimm, Shelby Higgins, Margareth Napoleon, Kathleen O'Connell, and Colin Plaskerou.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing those members to the Community Garden Task Force, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the motion carries. At this time, I would like to welcome our guests who are here for the proclamation for LGBT Pride Month. This is Gay Pride Month. I realize we are late in the month in presenting this proclamation, but at this time, I would like to ask Pastor Rob Apgar-Taylor to come forward and receive the proclamation. Pastor Rob, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
I know that you gave our invocation at our swearing-in ceremony, and so it's nice to have you back. You are the pastor at Veritas United Church of Christ here in Hagerstown and also the Grace United Church of Christ in Frederick. So thank you for being here. On behalf of the city council, I wish to offer this proclamation for Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month, June of 2014. Whereas Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender Pride Month is a month-long annual observance of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender history and the history of gay rights and related civil rights movements. And whereas LGBT Pride Month originated in the United States and was first celebrated in 1994, and whereas many people date the beginning of LGBT Pride Movement to the Stonewall Riots in New York City, which were a series of spontaneous violent demonstrations by members of the gay community against a police raid that took place in the early morning hours of June 28, 1969, at the Stonewall Inn in Greenwich Village, neighborhood of New York City. They are widely considered to constitute the single most important event leading to the gay liberation movement and the modern fight for gay and lesbian rights in the United States. And whereas according to the Library of Congress, the purpose of the commemorative month is to recognize the impact LGBT individuals have had and still have on history locally, nationally, and internationally. And whereas celebrations such as parades, parties, rallies, marches, picnics, workshops, symposia, and concerts will attract millions of participants from around the world, now therefore, I, David Geisberts, the mayor of the city of Hagerstown, do hereby proclaim June 2014 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, and Transgender LGBT Pride Month in Hagerstown, Maryland, and encourage those in our city to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists and to celebrate the great diversity of the American people. So Pastor Rob, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And would you like to, would you like to offer a few words?
Thank you very much. Good evening. I want to thank Mayor Geisberts for this honor and for recognizing what is a wonderful community, for the diversity that exists here, and for the grace and love that is found in Washington County. And it is an honor to receive this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I understand we want to do a picture, so please, if anyone would like to come take a picture with us, come on up. Anyone else? Anyone?
Oh, here.
Hey, Vaughn. I see, yes.
One, two, three, ready? One more, one.
Thank you. Maybe next year we'll have at least a party, if not some symposia and concerts. Yeah. Okay, at this time, we have citizen comments. And I'll just remind everybody that citizen comments are limited to five minutes per individual. Meetings are televised and recorded. Your comments will be on air and on tape and on YouTube. The first person signed up to speak on the list is Mary Haynes. Mary, please come, you know the drill. Say your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. I'm Mary W. Haynes, H-A-I-N-E-S, 27 Laurel Street, the city, 21742. And I am here tonight because of the drug activity in the alleys of our area from Sheets at Potomac and Fairgrounds to Northern Avenue. I have been told, aware of some drug activity in the area, and will be doing my best to address it. Washington County dispatchers have been made aware as well, and special checks have been put in for the area in addition. I believe the NTF has been made aware as well. The empty pill bottle from Walmart marked Oxy something, found in the alley between Frye and the 1100 block of Hamilton. I have handed over to Penny to give to her NTF contact, which is what I shall do with all drug-related paraphernalia and accoutrement that gets into my hands. I would like to say for the record that the Sheets at the corner of Fairgrounds and Potomac Avenues needs to be closed. I suggest the city write the Sheets Corporation a letter to that effect. The place serves two purposes mostly: hot coffee for our rich and famous and a locus for all sorts of nasty criminal activity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Mary. The next person signed up to speak is Mr. Kevin Spielman. Mr. Spielman? Hello, sir.
Yeah, my name's Kevin Spielman. I live in Potomac Towers, 11 West Baltimore Street, apartment 323, Hagerstown, Maryland. I'd like to know when the buildings damaged by the fire over a year ago will be razed. You all own the building. The owners of the buildings, the owners of the new Baltimore Street car wash, also would like to know, as it is put, extreme hardship on them trying to get the place renovated by fall/winter. The buildings I'm talking about are 1921 West Antietam Street. You all have a timeframe. You all own the buildings.
Well, we will get you that update. I'm going to ask our staff, Mr. Lestition, to come up and give us an update real quick on the status. I know that the city has already paid, I think, at least $90,000 for the upper story demolition. I think we've been trying to pursue the owner so that we could, eventually, we're going to have to acquire the property and spend up to $250,000 to demolish the whole thing. But I'll let John address the specifics of where we're at with that.
I thought you all own the buildings.
Well, that's why I want to get Mr. Lestition to clarify because it's been, it's been a couple of months since we've had an update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Yes, the city technically became the owner in March of this year. The building had been a subject of a bankruptcy, and we worked with the bankruptcy trustee. We accepted ownership of the building. We had a structural engineer again there today looking at the property. We're putting together a proposal to bring it down. We are working with an area investor who's interested in the property, and we're looking for some sort of partnership between us and that investor. Staff will be back probably, depending on the meeting schedule, in mid-July or early August with that proposal. It's our intention to see something happen on that property and the building to come down before fall.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Spielman. Next up is Mr. Robert Miller.
Yes, sir. I'm Robert Miller, 650 North Prospect Street, and I am here about the handrails that should be placed in the interior walkway where I live. They put a small handrail up at the steps, and that's it. There's two other step downs, and the interior walks are deteriorated bad enough that you stumble. And I know from doing concrete work years ago that the city can inspect these and make people replace these sidewalks. And it looks to me like it's all being neglected.
And this is at your address on Prospect Street? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. 650.
All right. Well, we will follow up with staff and see if that is a possibility. Okay.
Okay, I'll thank you.
Next up is Keely and Mark Newbauer. Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Keely Newbauer, 942 Mulberry Avenue, Hagerstown, Maryland, 21742.
Thank you. Thanks.
Could you get a little closer to the mic, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
For four years, we have been reporting property maintenance code violations to the city for properties near and adjacent to ours. As a result, from repeat offenders, we have endured threats, harassment, vandalism, trespass, and ultimately, the expense of litigation and attorney fees. The city insists they can't do anything unless we report the violations. For every one time we report the violations, there are five times we do not because we don't feel up to enduring irrational rants, attacks, and excuses for the negligence. The code protects the inspecting officers and city agents, but it does not protect the citizens willing to fight to maintain city neighborhoods from deterioration. Instead, we are asked to constantly report repeat offenders, and then are left to deal with the retaliations of individuals who do not want to recognize the code's minimum standards or feel entitled to exempt themselves from meeting code. In this current system, there is no way for citizens to report these situations while being protected from the offenders' retaliations or aggressions. We have always relied on the standards outlined in the City of Hagerstown Property Maintenance Code. We have always exercised our rights as property owners within the city limits to report violations in order to have them corrected. We have allowed the code officials to adopt and promulgate the rules. We have not operated outside of the system, nor have we dealt with offenders directly. We find it unacceptable that we are put in the position of having to report repeat offenders year after year and would like to inquire if this can be changed. Property owners should not need to be told for four years in a row to mow and weed a property or keep the grounds in a clean and sanitary state. The requirement that repeat offenders be reported over and over is putting citizens in unpleasant and dangerous situations and creating an impossible workload for the inspecting agents. I would argue that your communications are not stern enough and would like to inquire why a three-strikes-you're-out policy cannot be adopted. Why can't the law be changed so repeat offenders are directly fined after the third offense? Additionally, the argument of the offenders who are being reported is now, well, everyone's property is in worse condition, and why are we being made to comply? And you know what? They have a valid argument. The process is not being applied fairly and consistently across the board. We would like to inquire why this also can't change. When an agent goes on-site to inspect, you can easily look up and down the street and see porches rotting, soffits falling in, gutters falling off, woodwork rotting, and weeds growing unchecked. Inspectors would not even have to leave their vehicle. Why would they not take the opportunity to cite all the similar offenses while they are on-site? Wouldn't this be a more fair and be a broader brush to start affecting change? Maintenance is part of property ownership. It just is. Aren't we tired of watching our neighborhood deteriorate and crime creep in? The city tells us repeat offenders need to be addressed in civil court. The courts and the attorneys are telling us the property code visors should be addressed by the city. The process doesn't work. We have been here since 2000, and in the past, we have loved our home. We have volunteered in the community and done our best to maintain our home and the property. But after years, years of trying, we can no longer navigate this problem, and we are selling our house and leaving the city solely because of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone? Is there anyone else? I'm sorry? Well, we don't engage in back and forth during this part of citizen comments. Well, if you would like to make a comment, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Jeff Kerschner. I've been with the Hagerstown for quite a few years, born and raised here, and I have a small business. I work remote, and I moved my office down to South Prospect. Probably not the wisest decision in the world, but three years ago, not so bad. But within those three times, within the last three years, a lady here earlier said she found medication bottles for OxyContin, which we know is probably the worst drug that has, our government has led into for addiction into heroin and everything else. My office is about four, about two blocks down from a small convenience store. At that time, I never had an issue. Walked down, now I get approached with, "Do you have $50? Can I get some drugs? Do you have a cigarette?" You know, it's, for me, for me, growing up in this town and seeing this town literally go to crap within the city limits, I just don't get it. You know, and this is my first time being here, so maybe I don't know all the rules and the laws, but I hear this woman speak, and she's saying, "I'm done. I'm out of Hagerstown." Guess what? So am I. I'm out of this town. This town has become, to me, crap. And I know that sounds horrible, but, you know, schools have went down, our community has went down, Hagerstown downtown is despicable anymore. You know, we try very hard to have some good, we'll have, you know, one good block where we've got some good restaurants. we've got some good restaurants, but then, all around it, we got Section 8 housing, and we expect something good to happen out of that. And I just...it's making me sick, so much so that I'm with her. I'm moving out of this town. And I think that's sad, because I was born and raised here. You know, you even look at City Park, and City Park's a beautiful park. Not anymore. Half the drug interactions are happening at City Park. Why is that? So, I just...you know, for me, as a...as a...someone that is born and raised in Hagerstown, see this town completely go down year after year after year, it's very disappointing. So, I don't know if that makes any sense to you guys, but I just had to say it. Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing your thoughts, and I want you to know...I want you and everybody to know that we do listen to these comments. We take them seriously, and we follow up with staff when it's appropriate, but we're not...but we don't use this time to engage in a conversation. We want to hear from citizens, not engage in a back and forth. So, is there anyone else who did not sign up to speak who wishes to come up and speak, please? State your name and address for the record, por favor.
My name is Rob Apgar. I live at 59 West Side Avenue here in Hagerstown. For the two past comments that I just heard, I would like to draw everyone's attention onto the end of the agenda, the new business. I believe it's on approval of 2014 Community Policing Development Program application. I really do see that as a local police officer. I am a police officer, not in this area, but down in Washington, DC. And I can hear and understand, knowing that I've lived here for the past, goodness, almost 10 years now, and we have seen a large change in the environment and where our house is located on West Side Avenue. But I do find it encouraging that they're doing the best they can to do community policing. You know, we have the broken window theory in law enforcement. As the woman so eloquently put, you know, "We need to take care of our properties so that other people around us can see that this isn't a broken window area, that we do care about our properties, and we will report, and we will do our best to communicate with law enforcement." So I do want to just encourage citizens that I do see that I think progress will be made in doing this idea of community policing. And the more we, as citizens here of Hagerstown, we take responsibility and we actually show that we do care. I know I don't see a problem with doing more auxiliary policing or even doing a community policing effort where we report only, obviously don't want to interact, but report and work alongside with our law enforcement, who I'm sure are very stretched thin with the budget that they have and the officers that they have. You know, it's a very hard job to be a police officer, and it's very difficult when you're responding to, you know, what some people may think are small or silly calls, or what are running after somebody with a gun or a possible drug bust. So I do want to encourage citizens here that I am seeing that, at least from what I can tell of your new agenda, that you do have a community policing development program, hopefully coming very closely to being implemented. And I would hope that our chief here would definitely take into consideration that community policing really is the new way that law enforcement needs to go, and it really is becoming more of a customer service basis. And I can see that the city of Frederick, they do that as well. So hopefully, here in Hagerstown, we'll have that very soon as well.
Well, I do want to give a lot of props to our chief, who is very interested in community policing. And I think since we've taken office, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, I've sworn in 17, 16 or 17 new police officers. So we know what problems exist in our neighborhoods. There are neighborhoods, too. We see these problems. We're not blind to them, and we take it very seriously to address all of these issues, whether they're small or perceived as to be small, or very big issues like the overdose and drug issue. So I appreciate those comments. Anyone else who did not sign up to speak who would like to speak? Okay. We will close the citizen comments portion of our agenda and move into city administrators' comments.
Just one, which is to say that, believe it or not, we're wrapping up another fiscal year, ending on June 30th. Want to thank the council for getting a budget in place for July 1, when a lot of governments are struggling to get their budgets in place. You've helped us with an orderly transition from one fiscal year to the next, so we're very appreciative of that, and we're looking forward to the next fiscal year that'll begin in July. That's it for me.
Thanks. We'll move on to mayor and council comments. I'll start over here on my right. Mr. Alshire.
Just a reminder, as follow-up to citizens living in the south end that were interested in the expansion plans at the Schuster Concrete Operation, it looks like MDE has scheduled a public hearing at our request. It looks like that hearing is going to be Monday, June 30, 2014, at 7:00 PM at the library. For those unaware, while there is a concrete operation currently there at the southwest corner of Burhans Wilson Boulevard of Virginia Avenue, the plan is to implement a concrete, a waste concrete crushing and screening plant. If you've seen episodes of Gold Rush, that's sort of what I would envision this thing looking like. It has the ability to crush 150 tons per hour, equipped with 174 horsepower diesel-fired engine. I don't know what time of day that will be, what type of operation that will look like. It is a mobile unit, and that is a big place that it could be moved around on, and so I think it is important that the state allow us this public hearing so we can ask these questions.
Mr. Brubaker.
First time in a while, no comments tonight.
All right. Mr. Metzner. Mr. Munson.
I'd like to remind everybody that the municipal band, which had an exquisite, exquisitely nice concert last Sunday night and drew what looked like 500 or 600 people, is in its 100th year. On July 13, they're going to have the 100th Anniversary Program, and this mayor and council have put some very comfortable seating there, and I encourage everybody to get out and enjoy this amenity, which not very many communities in this United States has. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Nein.
For the ones that are leaving Hagerstown, let me just say that I'm very sorry. I've lived here my whole life. I know what decline it has taken, and I know what steps we've tried to do to make it better. I know that we also are given the area of where we have a lot coming into our area that are people that really did not...we were not grown...they did not grow up here, born here. So we're faced with a huge problem. We're faced also with the prison system, that we have a lot that are here in Hagerstown. We have a lot of organizations that will reach their hands out, and this is where they come. The amenities are here. How to solve that problem? Well, we tried to put a hold on certain organizations that we needed to hold at bay so that our downtown area would not be as bad. We were told we couldn't do it. Legally, we could not. Take it to court? No. Forget it. It's not going to happen. We are between a rock and a hard place. For code violations, I totally, totally agree with you. I know that the fight continues on. There are more people that say to me, "Look, this is what I have, this is what I've done, but yet, we go nowhere. I want you to come and look at 600 North Mulberry." 600 North Mulberry, as far as I know, has $10,000 in fines that this man has paid. Come look at his property and tell me that we should be faced with this. I hate to see you go. I know what investments you have made. I'm hoping that we can get it improved. We certainly do try to whatever end. I know with community policing, we did at one time, back when I was a kid, we had community policing. We had them that they were feet on the street, okay? We don't have that luxury any longer. Unfortunately, for us, in a bad way, we are growing, but I don't know to what end we are growing. But I needed to address that to you. I know that a lot of our good housing stock is up in the air. A lot of people are moving out. As far as our Section 8 and our housing, public housing, it's here. We didn't put it here. That was put here long before we got on this council. And unfortunately, it has been located in an area that we, again, have no control of, and then the federal government opened it up. At one time, it was thought to be just for seniors. No, it's not any longer. It's 18 years with disabilities and older, okay? Some of those, not good case scenario. But again, we can't solve that. We cannot say to the federal government, "They have to go. It's not going to happen." I wish that if you had ideas...not now, sir. But if you have ideas, please, let me know, because I would love to be able to share them. This is a task that is beyond. It really is. But I needed to address that, because I know, and I know from the standpoint of where I live, and I know that I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to have to fight to live here, and I told the other chief of police, "I hate to say that perhaps I may have to sit with a gun on my porch, which is illegal, but that's how bad my neighborhood has become." But it is very difficult, very difficult, and I just wanted to share that with you. Now, I need to go on. For the chief, I got a phone call...I didn't get a phone call. I saw it directly. Two pit bulls going into the fairgrounds, all right? We have a leash law. The gentleman came down the alley. I said to him, "You know, do you have a lead?" "No, my dogs are good." I said, "That's not the point. We do have a law." "Ma'am," he said, "I trust my life with these dogs." I said, "But what you don't understand is that your dogs could be attacked by another dog. They are off-leash." Then what? Vice versa. Well, even the police say that they're wonderful dogs, and they've never said anything to me about a leash. I'm passing it on. I don't know if it's fact or if it's fiction, but the fairgrounds is a huge area, and it does need to be addressed. And I'm sure that they...he is very local, and I'm sure, living in the same block as what I'm living in. So you needed to know about that. Also, last week, we had Urban Partners in. I was given a phone call, and it was a very distressing phone call, because Barbara Ingram was not in that plan, and honestly, when it was given, I really didn't think about Barbara Ingram, and I'm very sorry for that, because that should be a main focus point in this. When, knowing that we have got a building, that there could be an expansion, I don't know now that Urban Partners, because of it not mentioning Barbara Ingram, could be now something that could deter the person that has purchased the building, that maybe there is a possibility that this may not go forward. If this is the case, then what happens to Barbara Ingram? They have to increase their size because of not having certain rooms now for the students that are going there because of the University of Maryland, and I need to know now, where does that stand with Urban Partners? And I'm very sorry for not...
Penny, let me address that.
Okay.
So Barbara Ingram expansion is mentioned three specific times in the 40-page report. First time is on page one. It's mentioned along with the library, and basically, the expansion of Barbara Ingram is mentioned as an assumption, meaning that we assume that it is a project that is feasible, that is being moved forward by the Board of Education and the county. So in that respect, you know, the idea of the Urban Partners report is that it lists eight catalyst projects.
Correct.
The idea of a catalyst, it doesn't mean that it's the be-all and end-all of any development activity. In Hagerstown, the city was looking to Urban Partners to identify those eight catalyst projects, and the Barbara Ingram School expansion, first of all, for the first half of the last six months, they didn't really want us to mention it, because they were still in the developmental process of that project. We had an executive session with them, what was it, April? They also met with the county commissioners in an executive session at that time. So as far as them being listed as a catalyst project, no, they're not in the report as one of the eight identified. But furthermore, I don't think the Board of Education wants us to do a feasibility analysis on one of their projects. That would be another comment that I have.
Well, Mayor...
But to me, but if you read the report, it's mentioned quite clearly in there as an assumption that it's a project moving forward.
Mayor, would you be here to say that whether it's in the report or not has nothing to do whatsoever whether or not this council is going to address it?
Whether or not we support it. That's right.
I mean, the issue is, we are not wed to that report as it relates to, we can't do something...
It's not exclusive.
Exactly.
Right. But there was concern, and that's why it had to be brought forward, because...
I appreciate that.
With that, you know, without it, you have those that are hanging in limbo. Also, I would like for any of my council members to please come down Mulberry Street and Fairground, and I want you to tell me, because I see now we are going to okay patching that Henson and Sons is going to be doing, the gas company that came in and totally destroyed the place, okay? Come and look at the patching job that was done on the roads. Fairground and Mulberry. I want you to look at that and tell me that it suits, okay? Because certainly, my standards, it doesn't, and I certainly am not a paving person. Also, there was a stabbing that was on Summit Avenue. Unfortunately, it was a teenager who stabbed his stepfather. Again, when we're looking at code conditions that I feel could also have played a part with this, when people have nowhere to live, and they come in, and there are landlords that say, "Okay, you can have this place here, a one-bedroom, three people in one bedroom, all right? It makes for a bad situation." And not that anybody's even going to come forward with this, but because the neighbors knew about it, I now know about it. There's code that we can do on the outside, but certainly, we cannot do on the inside unless the tenants ask for us to be there. I only hope that this young man, and I don't know if he's been caught yet or not...
He turned himself in.
Okay, that somebody does look at the history of this relationship between the mother and the stepfather. And that's all I have to say.
And I appreciate that. I've been working with city staff on following up on the particular problems of that property, because they are ongoing and numerous.
And it's deplorable.
It is. And that...and I just, in my comments, I guess I'll address some of the comments that were made in relation to code and other nuisances. You know, we did, we spent months, four or five months, almost six months, debating crime-free housing and other nuisance abatement ordinances. I believe we finally, in the final analysis, kept code violations in there, which wasn't a sure thing. But this council has looked at many of those avenues to tighten the screws, if you will, on these problem properties. Certainly, there is always more we could do, but I do think that our city staff, with the resources that they have, and it is a complaint-based system. We do not have inspectors roaming the streets, looking for every violation that they could possibly issue to every single property owner, nor do I think our citizens would want us to do that. Because I know my porch needs repainted, and I don't need the city to remind me of that. But when it is an ongoing nuisance in a neighborhood, we do, we expect and we desire residents to let us know, because if we don't know about it, we can't do anything about it. I would also offer that for anyone who has ongoing neighbor issues that may not always involve city code, mediation is an excellent avenue to at least explore with problem neighbors, if you are so inclined, and if your neighbor is so inclined, to come to the table and try mediation. On another front, though, you know, sometimes I come away from these meetings rather depressed, because if I were just tuning in on YouTube or didn't know the whole backstory of what actually goes on in the city of Hagerstown, I would think we were the most dirty, crime-ridden city in the whole face of the earth. And what I have to tell you is, we're not. We are just like every other city that deals with very common social problems and finding the best way forward with good public servants here, I might add, who, well-intentioned, who have good hearts and minds to solve these problems. I really do appreciate when citizens come and share their thoughts. That's why I don't expect to engage in a back-and-forth debate with citizens during citizen comments. We want to hear what you have to say. We will listen to what you have to say, and we will certainly follow up on those items where we can follow up. For Urban Partners, I have heard very similar kinds of concerns about why wasn't this particular property mentioned, or why wasn't this particular organization mentioned? And again, the idea of this report was not to list all of our friends, or who all we think is good, or what organization contributes to the community. That was not the goal of this. But certainly, we... But certainly, we value all of the partnerships that we have in the community, whether they're catalyst projects, or they're, you know, a brand-new business that wants to open up in downtown, or any other part of the city. And I think, as just occurred earlier this evening at a work session, the council, council member Brubaker did a great job of reaching out to the state in order to use the remaining balance of the $100,000 that we received in the form of a grant from the Department of Business and Economic Development, which we used to hire Urban Partners, which was probably the wisest thing this council could do, to come up with a plan that is not the city's plan. This is a community plan. The Urban Partners Report outlines catalyst projects that are supported by the stakeholders in the community. It wasn't sort of pie in the sky, let's see what kind of ideas we can come up with. These are real, data-driven projects that are feasible, given the current market conditions. And that's what's so exciting about this endeavor, is that it's not the city's plan, and here's what we're going to do. This is a plan that we can continue to build partnerships in executing. And that is my hope. And what I'm happy to report is that the council has authorized staff to move forward with the change order to allow us to continue utilizing Urban Partners, to continue to engage the community in this ongoing project. That will not, the report is just the beginning, and is not the end of the work in that regard. There's something else related to that, I think, that I wanted to say, but it slips in my mind at the moment. So with that, just thinking, oh, I wanted to address one more thing. We seem to have an editorial staff at the local newspaper that believes that the magic pill, or the magic wand that this city needed, was a thing called Sora. Now, if anyone in the audience here even remembers what that was, I would be surprised. But the bottom line with that is that this group wanted $1.1 million to basically produce the same product that we received last week, which had a total cost of about $83,000 when it was all said and done, for 130 hours of community engagement that was spent by Urban Partners. That was in meetings with stakeholders, public meetings, meetings with staff. And so we were asked to fork over a million dollars, over a million dollars to an organization, give them all of the rights to bring in the developers of their choice with no bids, with a totally closed process, without transparency. And, and now we're being criticized for coming up with a report that was a process of engaging the community, engaging stakeholders. So I, for one, am not going to apologize. And perhaps the editorial staff at the Herald Medal likes to criticize the city to try to motivate us to do the right thing. And if that's the case, then I hope we can prove them wrong in a very swift manner. And that's all I will say about that.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say?
Please, Mr. Brubaker.
Real quick. On 1.1 million, an all-in-soph planning cost, and no commitment, no binding guarantee, nothing to invest in Hagerstown.
That's right. And that, and we'd be happy to provide the spreadsheet of the costs that they outline for one, over $1 million. If anyone asks, just call City Hall, we'll be glad to provide you with that information. Any other comments from council members? Moving right along to the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move for approval of minutes. This is presented from the Mayor and Council Meeting held on May 13, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor of the approval of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Minutes are approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move that all of the consent agenda be approved, is presented.
I'll second that as well.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Consent agenda is approved. Moving on to unfinished business. The approval, item A, the approval of an ordinance for a two-month extension to the cable television franchise agreement.
Hereby I move that the attached ordinance be approved to authorize a two-month extension of the cable television franchise agreement with Antietam Cable Television, Inc.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ordinance is approved. On to new business. Item A, approval of a resolution, a parking lease with the state of Maryland.
I hereby move for the approval of a resolution to approve a lease agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the state of Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation for the rental of 10 parking spaces in the central parking lot. The term of the lease is two years and commences on June 24, 2014. The annual rent to be paid to the city is $5,760.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next up, item B, is an approval of a resolution for a parking lease with the state of Maryland with the judiciary.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move for the approval of a resolution to approve a lease agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the state of Maryland Department of Judiciary for the rental of five parking spaces in the university district parking deck. Term of the lease is two years, commences in June 24, 2014. The annual rent to be paid to the city is $3,720.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the lease is approved. Item C is an approval of a resolution for a parking lease with the state of Maryland Department of Education.
Hereby I move for the approval of a resolution to approve a lease agreement between the city of Hagerstown and the Maryland Department of Education, Division of Rehabilitation Services, and Department of Juvenile Services for the rental of nine parking spaces in the university parking deck. The term of the lease is two years, commences on June 24, 2014. Annual rent to be paid to the city is $6,696.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion?
Just a comment, and this is probably a little off-topic, but I like to tout the necessity for adequate parking in our downtown. As everyone knows, we have thousands of square feet of space in process of rehabilitation, which will not occur without adequate parking. As staff indicated at a previous meeting, I believe we have 625 spaces in our two decks, 575 of those 625 spaces have been permitted out. In fact, the A and E deck is over-permitted at this point, and with the addition of projects in the pipeline, we will soon have greater permits issued than we will spaces available, which I would again tout as being a necessity to move on with the construction of additional deck space. I would hope one day we would get to the point of cities like Frederick and Annapolis, where we are building decks and not having enough space at any one time for the, for the amount of activity to fill them.
All right, on the motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Resolution is approved. Item D is the approval of a resolution for FY 2015 Community Legacy Application.
Hereby I move that the mayor and city council adopt the resolution indicating approval of the city's FY 2015 Community Legacy Application to the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. The application requests funding for three city capitol projects. One, $150,000 to work with a private property owner to create a pilot project for student housing for a university system of Maryland students. $120,000 for a homeownership acquisition rehabilitation project within targeted areas of the sustainable community area. And three, $100,000 for design of a new multi-use trail that will link the city's Arts and Entertainment District to City Park and its surrounding neighborhoods.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? I would only say that this is basically the first step now of the city implementing recommendations made by Urban Partners. So it has taken us a week to start taking action, less than a week. This is the first action step in many, many, many to come in implementing that plan.
And I think that it directly addresses a concern that was raised here this evening, which is, when do we plan to raise the structure on Antietam? I think this is the very type of project that ties into that occurring.
Any other discussion? On the motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Item E is the approval of a Civil War Heritage Area one-time funding support.
I hereby move for mayor and council approval of $5,000 in city funding support for the heart of the Civil War Heritage Area. This one-time funding will be combined with $15,000 from the Washington County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and 5,000 from Washington County. This will provide Washington County's $25,000 in funding support to be combined with a similar amount of funding each from Carroll County and Frederick County, and 75,000 in matching funds from the state of Maryland. Source of city funding will be the general fund.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker and seconded by Ms. Nye. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I had comments about this at the work session. I'm not going to repeat them. I think as a council, we've made it pretty clear that we do not expect to have this group, at least I would not expect to vote for this again if there were no other municipalities involved. And although it's a very small amount of money relative to our entire budget, it's almost criminal that we're being asked to match Washington County. In the same respect, the program is such of a program that we need to do it this year, but I won't be able to support this type of vote next year.
I would only add that I believe in our original discussion of this, that I think we should be chasing the headquarters for this heart of the Civil War Heritage Area to be what was envisioned in the Urban Partners Report as a heritage center. I believe the headquarters for this organization would be a nice match for that kind of a facility. And I do believe that future funding of that specific project and the organization could come from hotel-motel tax that desperately needs to be reexamined, not only the nature of it, but also the allocation of it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Ms. Nye, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Eyes have it, and the motion carries. Item F is the approval of a 2014 pavement preservation program.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of a contract with Craig Paving Incorporated of Hagerstown, Maryland, in the amount of $825,000 for the 2014 pavement preservation program. The project also includes $90,000 for pavement markings and $3,912 for testing and miscellaneous items. Funding for the project is highway user revenue in the amount of $901,912, and parking funds in the amount of $17,000.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Munson and seconded by Mr. Metzner. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just point out, the motion should say state highway user revenue, I believe. It's, these are state funds, distributed as it stands now as a one-time grant to the municipalities. It's still considerably less than what we received before the 2008 financial crisis. But we're putting it to good use for the long-term good of the city by paving streets and not using it for other projects.
And I'll just give a shout-out to the best city engineer in the country, who utilized a very high-tech system and very logical, rational way of prioritizing projects that are, come under this program for pavement, pavement preservation. So thanks for all the work on that. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion made by Mr. Munson, seconded by Mr. Metzner, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries, and the contract is approved. Next up is the approval of the 2014 cops hiring grant application.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move for mayor and council approval of the grant application by the Police Department and Department of Justice, Community Oriented Policing Services Hiring Program. The city's portion of the matching grant will be $393,000, spread over a three-year period, along with a one-year retention requirement of an additional $355,000 for the fourth year. If awarded, the grant would allow for the increase of five police officers, raising the sword and strength of the police department from 107 to 112 officers.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I make a, may I make a comment?
Please.
This is obviously going to help the police department work at their community policing, which of course is already a large effort by the chief of police and others in his department. And as the gentleman who spoke earlier said, this should go, should be helpful, at least, significantly helpful in providing those kinds of services to this community. You know, one of the problems we face as a community, and every community across the United States faces this, is that people are simply not as disciplined as they once were. And as a consequence, we need more police, and we need them to do more things. And this will give our police department an opportunity to help with that.
Mr. Mayor, if I can inquire to our administrator, just out of curiosity, Bruce, what's the, during this administration, what's been our lowest number of police officers?
In terms of the budgeted staff level?
Yeah, the sworn officers that we actually had.
Yeah, I think, I think this is the 12th. With these five, it takes it to 12 that you've added since you took office.
So we, because it seemed to be at one time, within the last couple of years, we were down to one of our lowest numbers of police officers, in recent times at least. This will bring us actually up to the highest number of sworn officers.
This is the highest number that I
That the city's ever had seen in recent history, at least. Yeah, at least in the last 20 years. This is the largest number, and I find it difficult to believe prior to that, we had more officers.
Not in any small part to the courage of this council approving a budget that funds these positions and then allows the administration to hire them.
Large amounts of money here.
Any other discussion? On the motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion is approved. Next up, item H, is the approval of a 2014 Community Policing Development Program application.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move for mayor and council approval of the grant application by the Police Department to Department of Justice Community Policing Development Program. The application will supply up to $100,000 to the Police Department for improvements to the neighborhood policing program. No city funds or matching dollars are required as part of this application.
And second on this one as well.
Any discussion? Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any, sorry, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The eyes have it, and the application is approved. Item H is the approval of a collection and disposal contract extension with Waste Management of Pennsylvania.
Mr. Mayor, hereby I move for approval of the extension of contract 1111M11 with Waste Management of Pennsylvania for curbside collection of residential trash, recyclables, and yard waste at the Recycle Bank incentive program. Contract also includes commercial trash recycle collection. That extension will run for a 36-month period from January 1, 2015 through December 31, 2017. I further move to extend an agreement with Waste Management of Pennsylvania for the disposal of trash collected within the city limits of Hagerstown at the Mountain View landfill near Upton, PA. The disposal fee will remain fixed at $42 per ton. Yard waste collected will be taken to Washington County landfill. The agreement is extended from January 1, 2015 through December 31, 2017.
Motion made by Mr. Alshire, seconded by Mr. Brubaker. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The eyes have it, and the contract is approved. Next up is item J, approval of a grant agreement with Chesapeake Bay Trust for Park Circle improvements and planning street trees.
I hereby move to authorize the city to enter into a grant agreement with the Chesapeake Bay Trust for $170,000 in Green Street, Green Jobs, Greentown funds to improve the quality of stormwater runoff. $75,000 will be used for green stormwater facilities at Park Circle with a city match of $100,000 CIP funds to pave and mark Park Circle. In addition, $95,000 of the grant will be used to plant trees. In addition, $95,000 of the grant will be used to plant trees, street trees, citywide.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner, any discussion?
Yes. The, uh, the map that we were provided as part of the motion packet shows a proposed bio-retention area to treat street runoff located in what I would deem a fairly visible location along Walnut Street, which will be in direct line of sight to the Hager House. And so, you know, while it looks like a big blue pond on the schematic we've provided, I'd be curious to hear from staff what it's really going to look like. Am I envisioning a stormwater management pond like you see in front of a shopping center?
No, I was actually thinking more something like Rain Garden, if you're familiar with those, which is basically a, kind of a lower-lying but landscaped area.
How deep?
A few feet. Basically, there is a storm drain inlet there on Walnut Street that captures the water off the street.
Right.
And then directly hard pipes it right to the stream there. We would intercept that and have an area that would have plants in it to digest the nutrients.
So is this going to be on the downside elevation of that? Because if you go there now, there's a bench about where that inlet is.
Right.
And that is level with the street in that area. And it's a, it's a, you know, a moat area, if you will.
Right.
That provides that direct line of sight into the Hager House property. Will this bio-retention area be at the lower elevation, in other words, once the bank drops off, at that location, or is it going to sit up street level?
I was thinking it would be at the lower level, down towards the stream. But we really haven't designed it yet, so we can.
Okay.
Rodney, it's not standing water. It's not meant to be standing water.
Just for a period of time after it rains.
Short period, but it's basically not a permanent area of standing water like a typical stormwater. It's designed to absorb down into the ground.
Yeah, would I like to envision this like I envision what we call stormwater retention pond in Fairgrounds Park, which is a beautiful garden-type area, that it's going to be very attractive versus a standard commercial.
Yeah, certainly, that's the point. We will definitely make sure that it is attractive.
And my, my preference, and I think the main point of the question is, where it's shown along the street, my hope is, is that it would be located on the down elevation area, in other words, down over the bank, very similar to how Fairgrounds Park, one is sort of, you know, at the lower level, you know.
So, no, I think we can make that happen, no problem.
Finest city engineer right here, everybody. Does a lot of good work.
All right, all those, any other discussion on the motion made by Mr. Brubaker and Mr., seconded by Mr. Metzner? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. Grant agreement is approved. Item K is the approval of the FY 2015 workers' compensation insurance and brokers' fees.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of coverage, Chesapeake employers' insurance and workers' compensation coverage and broker fees in the amount of
As much as it breaks my heart to do it, I'll, I'll second that. Since this is a significant increase.
Right, from what, 800 and something thousand, right?
It's not, not an easy motion to make, and I've had this conversation with many people. Folks just need to understand that the law in the state of Maryland is such that if you are a, basically a public safety worker, police officer, or firefighter, notwithstanding whatever the circumstances are whatsoever, if you have a heart attack or cancer, if I'm correct, it is immediately workman's comp. It is, it, it is frustrating from a monetary perspective. I'm not going to comment on the other areas, but on a monetary perspective, for the first time in ages, we no longer are able to simply control our workman's comp expense simply by having an accident-free workplace. We can have a workplace with absolutely not one single solitary accident in years and have the largest workman's comp issue that we've ever had because of firefighters and/or police officers having heart attacks or cancer. And again, I'm not here to comment on whether that's an appropriate thing to do or not. That's state law. That's, uh, that's not where our vote is on any control that we have pro or con. But when people hear that we're having an expense go from 800,000 to over a million, they have good reason to look at us and say, what are you doing to control that expense? What we can do, and what we have tried to implement, is health procedures with our employees. But for those of us who've lived long enough, you know, no matter how healthy you are, if you're dealt the right genes, you're going to have cancer and you're going to have heart disease. We see it by the amount of athletes that die at young ages, they're in excellent shape. It's not the fault of the police, it's not the fault of the firefighters, and it's not the fault of city government. It's a reality, just like one of the last motions we made, to expend a huge amount of money on a stormwater management issue that the, candidly, if the state of Maryland wasn't telling us we had to spend your taxpayers' money on, it wouldn't be doing.
I agree with everything you said about workers' comp, Mr. Metzner, and would only add that when I show up on the scene of a fire in downtown Hagerstown, I do not expect to see a Hagerstown firefighter with a cigarette hanging from their mouth while they're in uniform pulling a hose off of a fire truck. So that, you know, goes along with the making healthy choices route, but also goes into the personal responsibility realm of what we're talking about here. With that, any other discussion on the motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Mr. Munson? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item L is the approval of FY 2015 liability and property insurance.
I hereby move that mayor and city council approve the fiscal 2015 renewal of coverage with the local government insurance trust for liability and property insurance in the amount of $405,400.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Metzner, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Item M, approval of administration of medical claims, United Healthcare.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for approval of United Healthcare to administer the medical claims for fiscal year 2014-15.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the motion carries. Next up is the approval of a specific stop-loss insurance with United Healthcare.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for approval of United Healthcare to administer the stop-loss insurance of a medical plan for FY 14-15.
Second.
I heard Mr. Brubaker second first, so on the motion of Mr. Alshire and seconded by Mr. Brubaker, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item O is the approval of flexible spending HRA administration.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move that mayor and city council approve the acceptance of changing the administration of the following programs on July 1, 2014. Administration of the Flexible Spending Health Reimbursement Account/COBER, services to be provided by Discovery Benefits. The annual savings will be $1,100, and we expect to have better administration of the programs and improved customer service.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I would only note that I thought I was going to be spending an awful lot of time this week in HR because of the absolute incompetence of the current program, TASC, I guess they are. Fortunately, I saw this motion and realized we weren't going to be dealing with them after the first, but I can tell you, after two weeks and multiple phone calls, I finally have been able to access my account one week before losing the entire balance in it, and it was not easily done, and it was due to sheer, total, complete incompetence of the people who are administering the program currently. So I would hope we get better service.
Not only that, the bid's $1,200 lower than the current provider.
That's why we have a competitive bidding process. All those in favor of the motion by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item P, approval of the FY 15 meter and MXU purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the mayor and city council approval of expenditure of $1,112,204.50 of Water Division inventory funds for the purchase of radio read meters for the residential meter replacement program.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner and seconded by Ms. Nye, any discussion?
Whole lot of money for a program, though, that we're converting over to everything that we've been doing.
It is an investment. Mr. Alshire, did you say something?
I said I will abstain.
Okay. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed, say no. And we have one abstention. Would you like to explain your abstention?
I don't have to.
Oh, okay. Abstain. All right, the motion carries. Item Q, approval of FY 15 utility patching contract, Henson &amp; Son.
I hereby move that the mayor and city council approve the fiscal year 2015 street patching contract in the amount of $264,642 with Henson &amp; Son, Inc. This contract amount is an estimate. The actual cost, based on the actual work performed for street patching and repairs, associated the operation, with the operations of the Water Division and Wastewater Division. This contract has two one-year renewal options under mutually agreeable terms. Approval of this contract authorizes utilities department staff to exercise the renewal options. Adequate budgetary funds are in place for the work identified under this contract.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Brubaker, seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion?
Only would note, one of the closest six-figure bids that, that I've seen, I think there's a $253 difference between the two bids on a $264,000 project.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item R, the last item, is the approval of contract extension for the installation of pavement markings.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for the approval of additional work to the open-end contract with Alpha Space Control Incorporated of Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, and the not-to-exceed amount of $165,000 for the installation of pavement markings. Markings of streets paved in the upcoming pavement preservation project is $90,000, while the balance of the $75,000 is for replacing existing faded pavement markings. Funding for the project is state highway user revenue in the amount of $901,912.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you. The ayes have it, motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you.